I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 150 Board of Education meeting for February 10, 2014 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ross.
Here.
Mrs. Wolfman.
Here.
Mrs. Butler.
Here.
Mrs. Cosner.
Here.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Mrs. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Floyd.
Here. Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First would be awards and recognition. Dr. Lathan.
I just want to recognize Treewind K-8 School. They have the bulletin boards on display behind us this evening. Also, they'll be sponsoring Parent University, which will be held next Wednesday night. So, thank you to Treewind K-8 School for providing the displays this evening.
Thank you. Any announcements? Any announcements by any board members or the administration? None. Next item is approval of minutes. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of January 27, 2014?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, corrections, or edits? Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mrs. Cosner.
Aye.
Mr. Crawford.
Aye.
Mrs. Patel.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We've now come to the place in our agenda where members of the public may address the school board on any topic. Please come to the podium and give your name for the benefit of our minutes. The time limit for anyone's speaker is five minutes, and the time limit for any one topic is 20 minutes. No person less than 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by his or her parent, guardian, or teacher, except with unanimous consent of the board. Kathleen Duffenbach.
I'd like you to refer to Board Policy 8.96. You are supposed to be keeping your parents and guardians thoroughly informed about their child's school and education. You are supposed to be encouraging involvement in their child's school and education, establish effective two-way communication between all families and the Board of Education and district personnel. You are to seek input from parents and guardians on significant school-related issues. You are to inform parents on how they can assist their child's learning, and you are to train district staff to work with and accept input from a diverse group of parents or guardians. I would like each and every one of you to explain to all of us how removing two special education teachers mid-year and a hands-down superb principal has served any purpose at all but to undermine Charter Oak and its blue ribbon status, to sabotage this year's ISAT scores perhaps, so that your cherry-picked data that you used in your biased investigation will stand up. Do any of you folks sitting around this horseshoe give a care in the world about our children, or are you merely paying lip service to it? I want to know, how do you sleep at night? I believe you all need a wake-up call and are living in a fog, a viral fog for sure, a Broad Foundation-mentored-viral fog. And for those of you here tonight that do not understand what Broad Foundation is, I ask that you go out tonight and Google it and read all that you can, because you will be astounded as to how many parents across this country are up in arms because of the practices of this organization and its graduates and the harm that they are doing in our school districts everywhere, including District 150. I am appalled and I'm ashamed, and I cannot believe that the actions that this board has taken regarding Charter Oak against, excuse me, our faculty and our teachers and, most importantly, our students, it's reprehensible. And, Mr. Floyd, your lack of empathy, knowledge, or care for our special education students and children is ridiculous. The comments that you made after the last board meeting and your decision on Mr. Wetterhauer and the teachers at Charter Oak, that we, as parents of special-needs kids, find it hard to hear that our kids may not be performing at the academic level as what we might have thought, really? Do you have a special-needs child? Do you even understand what it is to raise one, nurture one, send them off to school from a place that they have known all their lives to be the most safe environment that they know, their home with their parents and their family? You took these special education students mid-year from these children. Our children are suffering. They are suffering every single day. We still do not have regular teachers in those classrooms. Every single day, it's been a different teacher for these kids. Do you have any idea what that does to special education children? I don't think any of you do, and I don't think any of you care. It takes leaps of faith for these kids to become trustworthy adults and to trust adults at all. Some of them, it takes months to build relationships with these educators, and you just ripped them from their lives with no accord and no care at all. Your high-priced attorneys, who did your one-sided investigation, must have advised you on this subject? I highly doubt it. You have no idea what it is like to sit in an IEP meeting and fight for your child so that they get the services afforded them by the federal government, the federal law, ladies and gentlemen. You have to have educated individuals in an IEP tell you that your child should not be going to the school that they are destined to go to. This happened to my grandson, that he should be going to a special education school instead and not Charter Oak, that he shouldn't be included in a regular classroom. Do you know the loudest voice in that IEP room that day? It was the principal, John Wetterhauer. Absolutely not, he said. This child will not be taken out of Charter Oak. He will continue to go here, and he will flourish, and he will grow, because we will see to it that it happens, and he has. That's the person that you removed from Charter Oak and the administration. Why in the world would you do something like that? What is your answer? You're going to sit there and stare at me blankly and not answer, because you do not have a good one. I know in my heart that nothing that I say tonight is going to change anything that you have decided, but all of our children are suffering at your hands. There is a virus in this school district and at the highest of levels, and it is alarming that when you start seeing our principals and our teachers, of high-quality, dedicated people, transferred, relocated on a moment's notice, or fired, or forced out...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you too.
Lucy Peevy.
My name is Lucy Peevy, and my child goes to Charter Oak School, a first grader. And I wanted to say that I did research on superintendent license moving around people, and it's just unbelievable. So, Garfield Primary School closed, Columbia Middle School closed, 53 full-time teachers were put on layoffs in 2012, 182 teachers received pink slips. Then, I'm sorry. Such wonderful principals as Mr. Wetterhauer, Brett Elliott, Dave Pauls, Assistant Principal, they were asked to stay where they are. Still, the board didn't listen. It just seems like that our voices are not heard. Well, I'm sorry, but this will be referred to the state of education of Illinois. Tomorrow is a city council meeting, and we are coming. We want to address this question, why our questions are not answered, why our voices do not mean anything. And moreover, I'm myself a teacher. I'm a teacher of a second language, English is a second language, and I am a part of diverse community. I come from Russia, so I will share this experience with my Russian educators, how freedom, speech of voice, is exercised in America. So, do you think you are taking an oath before we talk here, so it doesn't mean anything then, because you continue to disregard our pleas? And not one parent was displeased with Mr. Wetterhauer. So, tomorrow, we will go and speak our voices, because it just seems like that here, it's like going into one direction. Whatever you decide is going to be the same, it's not going to be the same. And Superintendent Lason, you really need to think hard about that. So many turns around, so many teachers were laid off, so many teachers got pink cards. For what? Where are the explanation? The explanation is, I am holding these teachers and principals accountable. Well, I think it's time to hold you accountable.
Thank you. Sharon Cruz.
In October 2010, incident is now more meaningful to me than it was at the time. Not that long after Dr. Lathan arrived, I stated at a board meeting that I had heard that the district was no longer keeping tardy records for students, which would also mean no consequences for being late to class. Shortly after I made the comment, Dr. Lathan and I both learned that the tardy policy had actually been mitigated during an earlier administration, and I don't believe much has changed since then. However, Dr. Lathan's response to my comments sheds much light on today's state of affairs. The day after the board meeting, I received the first of only two phone calls I ever received from Dr. Lathan. Does anyone care to guess the purpose of her call? After exchanging a few pleasantries, Lathan cut to the chase and asked the name of the principal from whom I had received the information. I told her that I would not be giving her that information, to which she replied, and I'll never forget, "Aw, Sharon, come on." She stated something to the effect of wanting to know which principal was undermining her. I hadn't even mentioned a principal. I didn't realize it then, but a climate of retaliation against principals had begun and has ultimately led to the fiasco of retribution we are now witnessing at Charter Oak. The Charter Oak website has found Dr. Lathan's 2011 public comment stating in educational terms, "I want to be a Broad award-winning district." I'm sorry. I believe she has succeeded. Tell me, do these Broad characteristics sound familiar? Principals are treated like pawns by the superintendent, relocated, rewarded, and punished at will. A culture of reprisal develops in which teachers, principals, staff, even parents feel afraid to speak up against the policy of the district or the superintendent. The school board starts to show signs of Stockholm syndrome. They vote in lockstep with the superintendent. This time, in order to do Lathan's bidding, you conducted a kangaroo court-like investigation, which, according to definition, is held by a group to give the appearance of a fair and just trial, even though the verdict has already been decided. Your lawyer interviewed the accused teachers and the students. What is legal or fair about your attorney representing you and reporting to us her interpretation of interviews? We are asked to take your attorney's word for everything. To my knowledge, the students had no representation or third party to witness the questioning procedures. If not illegal, it is certainly unethical, not showing any of the humanity expected of the educational institution. You got the answers you wanted, but we don't know the questions, or the tone of voice, or the body language that elicited those answers. Is there any time in the district's history when children were used in such a way to discipline a principal and teachers? Remember, no one did any harm to these young people. They are just pawns in Lathan's game of revenge, as are the rest of you seated around the horseshoe. I do want to call attention to one of the more absurd accusations in this report. The accusation is that during ISAT testing at Mark Bill's, students turned over desks and pleaded with staff for inappropriate assistance on the assessment, and the blame for this aggressive behavior went to the Charter Oak teachers, who had not seen these students for nine months. That's a doozy of a blame game. You can't be so duped as to buy into that accusation. Also, the report implies that all students turned their desks over, but regardless of how many students, such an emotional environment would be a real disruption in testing procedure, and that right there might be the explanation for the low test results. This kind of testing environment totally taints the test results and therefore the faulty conclusions drawn by your investigation. Also, I'm surprised that Dr. Lathan had any time in the spring of 2013 to prepare principals for the ISAT tests. As I recall, she was busy collecting and recollecting books to be barcoded, because she forgot students needed books to study for the test. She forgot the test.
Terry Knapp.
Saturday, I witnessed the debate, the candidates' debate between Ms. Patel and Ms. Wilsonholm, and found some things incredible again, as I witnessed her running five years ago. Ms. Patel mentioned that the stadium would remain green. It's kind of interesting how the stadium can remain green when you're going to give Manuel and Peoria High new football stadiums to play games there. I don't know what you're going to do at the stadium if they get stadiums at Manuel and Central, but it'll be interesting. You also, when I brought it up about the stadium being sold, Ms. Patel, you acted as though I was incredibly stupid and didn't have any information, because you said you had no information of that, nobody at the horseshoe had any information about that, even though it had been talked about for a year and a half before I mentioned it at the board meeting. It's kind of interesting. You also, five years ago, when you ran, this is point two, you said that you would vote against the closure of Woodruff High School, and you were the deciding vote, four to three, to close Woodruff High School, four to three. Your vote, the second meeting that you were on the board, had absolutely no knowledge about what this would do to kids. The whole North End was disenfranchised. They've been bussed out of the North End, Averville-Kingman area, which is the oldest homeowners association in Peoria. They've been bussed ever since. They don't even have a school on the North End. So, you know, we said, and you said, "We don't have enough kids for four high schools," and then you turn around and vote to give the Quest Charter to Glen Barton. This board voted to give the Quest Charter to Quest, so we now have another high school. We have four high schools now. This board said we didn't have enough kids for four high schools, as did the mayor. This was the Chamber and the City Council and the people wanting to get rid of Edison, which you told the Edison people you were against at the time you ran, that's another point, and then you voted to close Edison down, which I was in favor of closing Edison, because you're saving $3 million a year, plus the $1 million you save outsourcing the students to Quest Charter School, you save $4 million. That's why you're in the black. You keep telling these people you're in the black, you're in the black. That's because you saved $3 million, finally closing Edison after 10 years, plus the $1 million you save disenfranchising students from the regular public schools and putting in a charter school where the teachers are given less benefits and less pay and the inability to unionize, and the money that's left over from that goes to the company out of Cleveland that runs the charter schools, it's affiliated with the government of Turkey. And, you know, if you don't believe that, again, research it. You also, again, on the concept of attorney's fees, a million dollars in attorney's fees, and you sat there for three years and talked about hiring in-house attorneys. Ms. Patel, you're an attorney. To pay these people $1 million when their main office is in the suburbs of Chicago, and most of that money goes back to Chicago in the suburbs and is spent there, you know, just like the 17 million, excuse me, that went to the Edison Corporation in New York City, left this city, $17 million in taxes, and went directly to the Edison Corporation on Fifth Avenue in New York. I mean, it makes no sense what we do with our money. Now, we're finally in the black, but we got to tell the public why we're in the black. You got rid of Edison. Now, if you outsourced all your schools to private schools or to charter schools, you would make $21 million. If you outsourced every student in this district, you would have, the way I figure, $21 million left over, and you could sit here in your horseshoe and say, "We made $21 million this year," because the companies that are running the charter schools and totally disenfranchising the students and the teachers by paying less wages to the teachers and less benefits to the teachers and more money to the companies that run it, it's like what you're trying to do with the security people. You're going to outsource that, everybody knows that. That's why Dr. Lathan was brought here by the Chamber and the city, to disenfranchise unions, to keep unions from forming. We know that the teachers at Charter Oak, excuse me, at Charter Oak, but Quest cannot unionize for five years, and then at the end of five years, they cannot form a union with the local union here, the PFT, they cannot join that union. There's a purpose behind all of that, you know, and go back to the Broad Center and everything else, which has been talked about. The FOIA machine you're buying tonight and number 12 of the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll bring it up next time.
Sabino Sierra.
My name's Sabino Sierra. I live at 1708 South Stanley. And, oh, thank you. And these speakers before me, you know, they speak with the truth and confidence. And I just like to say that you people listened to Superintendent and whoever, and you broke up all the neighborhood schools, and then you kept one, like you started grassing, and then you're utilizing Woodruff right now. You're spending our money like crazy, you know what I mean? I just wonder who died and made the Superintendent queen. And so, I've come to a conclusion that all you people sitting up there, when it's time for you to be, if you're going for reelection, I'll be one of the forces behind you to remove you from the school board, because this is the worst school board I've ever seen, and I've been connected with schools, both public and parochial schools, you know, and you people are just all mixed up, you know. You might have all those degrees and what have you, you know, but to me, you don't have the wisdom to, when you take on a job like this, you know, you're not qualified. The same with the Superintendent. She's not qualified. She took a Rush course so she could get certified here in Peoria, and her thing that she said when she got there, asked you if you were ready for a change, and you said, "Yes." There has been a change, all for the worse, you know. You're talking to a young man here that's self-educated. I speak two languages fluently, and I grew up listening to a lot of people that had more human knowledge. As I was growing up, in my line of profession, I had that privilege to mingle with a lot of people, you know, judges, lawyers, doctors, and people down the state, you know. So, and then when we ask the Superintendent a question, she never answers it fully, you know, and that's three strikes against her, because she comes out over in left field with lots of her responses to us people talking. And so, you people, you got a little more time to start changing things around, and if you don't, we're going to have to do something else to get rid of you. And if you don't, we're going to have to do something else to get rid of you people. That's all I got to say because we're storming mad. These people behind me, you've been missing where their school. And they're mad as hell, you know what I mean? And so, I urge you to straighten up and fly right. Thank you.
Board President, Mr. Cloyde, fellow board members and School District 150 administrators. My name is Michael Paul Olson. I live with my wife and father at 1025 West Teton Drive, Peoria, Illinois 61614, just north of Richwoods. I'm a District 150 graduate of Richwoods in 1966. I received my Bachelor's of Science degree in education from Michigan State University in 1970 and a Master's degree in education from Bowling Green State University in Ohio in 1971. I taught and coached in Peoria at the high school level for 37 years, of which 33 years were enjoyed at District 150, 11 in Nightland at Richwoods, and 22 with the Lions over at Central. Over the past five and a half years, I've substitute taught in District at Richwoods and Peoria High School, the two high schools that I taught at in District 150. I'm a very proud 150 graduate, a retired District 150 teacher-coach, and a current homeowner in our district. However, I feel there are some things going on in our district that must be addressed. I want to speak on the, I wanted to speak at the last board meeting. Unfortunately, I was at a Hall of Fame banquet up in Chicago. I did not get back until 6:03. I drove six and a half hours and I was three minutes late. And I was told that things were brought up, which I, so I went and asked Mr. Copeland, I believe, if I could still maybe speak. And he said, "No, I was too late." So, I understood that, you know. I was disappointed, just like you'd be disappointed if you went somewhere and whatever the reason you were not able to, you know, be able to do what you wanted. I did, but I was, you know, I understand three minutes late. Like my mother used to tell me, "If you're, you don't want to be hanging for three minutes." When I'd tell her mom, "I'm only three minutes late," you know, and she said, "No, how'd I like to be hanging for three minutes? No, I don't want to do that." So, I understood. But here's where the problem came in. Somebody came in five minutes after me. They spoke. Now, you know, and I only bring that up because there was a couple of other things that transpired during the meeting the other night when I was here. Some people were told they had to sit at a seat. Some sat, some didn't. I'm only bringing that up. That's not right. This is a group that's in charge. We're either in charge or we're not in charge. If some people stand and some people sit, that, if some people are told they got to, you know, sit down, that's not right. But that's what I saw being here last week. Okay. But that's why I'm back tonight, because obviously I wasn't able to speak last week, which I wish I would have, but I couldn't. It's very easy for all of us, number one, it's very easy for all of us in education, whether we are board members like you, district administrators like Dr. Lathan, okay, teachers, staff that are around the room here, to say we are, quote, "in it for the kids." However, I'm not sure some of our decisions making at the top have been helpful to, quote, "to the kids." We, the district, have lost too many good building principals in our schools over the past couple of years. Mr. Kevin Curtin at Garfield, Mr. John Wetterhour at Charter Oak are two prime examples. These principals were removed from their buildings. As far as teachers go, we have many fine teachers, as we know, in District 150. But on the other hand, they're working, in my opinion, and being around them and listening to them, working under way, way too much pressure that is coming from Wisconsin Avenue. The teachers are the, quote, "foot soldiers" in the educational process. They must be encouraged, not scared. They must be applauded, not moved, and most of all, held in the highest regard by you, the board members and our superintendent. Any major change, that second point I'd like to bring up, any major change in the security program in District 150 schools, in my opinion, a huge mistake. The building administrators, the teachers, the staff, and our students need the security that is currently in place. They do a great job, and if anything, we could use more of them. These people are tremendous. They take care of all of our needs as teachers, substitutes, administrators, and for the kids. If anything, we need more, and they should be compensated, remember, better. Remember, we are all in it for the kids, so let's provide every student and every staff member the safest schools possible. I also feel strongly, I like the additions that are going into some of our schools, but I think Peoria Stadium should always be where it's been all these years. Yes, it needs renovation, but it doesn't need to go. Fix it up, replace what needs to be replaced, and allow the students of the 21st century to enjoy the same thrills their parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents had performing under the lights at the covered stadium on War Memorial Drive. I may add, it is one of the only covered grandstand, football, track, soccer, which are venues that are played there, in the United States at the high school level. It's something we have that nobody else in the area has. Keep our stadium green.
Thank you, sir.
In closing, I encourage any of you to contact me at any time, and I thank you for this time.
Thank you. A classmate of mine from 1966 at Richwoods. Mimi McDonald.
Oh, gosh. I'm not surprised that Laura Patel walked out of the room just when I was going to speak because I wanted to talk to her. So, I'll be talking to empty space there. I was sitting here talking to some special education parents, and as I said, you know nothing about special education. I know quite a bit about it because I do process the district on it, and I do process and help other parents do it. And we always won. And I just want to say to these Charter Oak parents of special education children, all you need to do, the federal law says that the district needs to provide an appropriate and free education. And these children, when they're having a different teacher in the classroom every day and they have special needs, that is not appropriate. So tomorrow, you should all tell your teachers and your school that you want to due process. And then when the state finds out that every parent at Charter Oak that has a special need kid is due processing District 150, then they'll realize we've got a real problem going on here. Now, I don't care that Laura Patel walked out, but I do want you to know that I heard that at the forum that she spoke to on Saturday, she said she saved Washington Gifted School, and she said that twice. And I've talked to some other people about that. We didn't know Washington Gifted was in trouble. And I mean, how did she save it? And did you know she saved it? And did you know she's personally taking credit for saving it? So that's what I wanted to ask her, but she had to leave the room. I'm sure somebody queued her in that I put, I want to talk about Laura Patel on there. But since she's out of the room, she can't argue with me, I just want to call attention to everyone in this room that she is running for the board president, the school board on March 18th is the election. And all you Charter Oak parents have the responsibility and privilege of voting her out. And so, I hope that you will all take advantage of that. She is going to be the first board member to go, and we are going to send this Board of Education a message. She will be the first, and slowly but surely, we will replace all of you. And I hope they don't put me on the Board of Education, although I ran twice, because you know what? I could never do the things that you people do to other people. You know, you think you're destroying reputations here. You have destroyed a blue-ribbon school. You have tried to destroy a principal and these two teachers' reputations, but you know whose reputations you destroyed? You destroyed your own. Because I have no respect for any of you. And that's why I speak to you the way I do and laugh in your face.
I'm Mary Beth Cunningham. My address is 6219 North Eldorado Drive, Peoria 61614. I'm again coming to you from a place of pure concern and discontentment for the way that our district is being managed. First and foremost, I need for you to understand the many places that I'm coming from and approaching you. As I mentioned the last meeting, I'm a third-generation graduate of District 150 schools. I am the mother of two boys who I've always planned on sending to District 150 schools. In fact, given my exceptional academic and vocational success, my husband has left most of the academic decisions up to me. So, three and a half years ago, when we were buying our current home, we had options in Peoria and the metropolitan area alike. Pregnant with our first son, we knew that the home that we chose would need to be housed, excuse me, would need to be housed in the school zone where we wanted our children to go. We found a home in Northmore-Rolling Acres school zones that happened to be the home of our dreams. It is also the neighborhood of our dreams. Shortly thereafter, my in-laws, who have boys near the ages of our boys, moved in and made our choice of neighborhood even better. We had options in nearby towns who have very reputable schools, but in the final decision, I essentially begged my husband to just trust me and not listen to the misguided hype of how terrible the district was. Without blinking, my husband agreed, and we happily bought our home. Many of our friends and family members assumed since we moved back into Peoria that we would certainly be sending our school, our children to private schools. Our response has always been, and currently still is, no, we moved to the school in the neighborhood we were, where we want our kids to attend. Aside from the high test scores, which as an expert in the field of educational psychology, I will be the first to admit those test scores aren't indicative of academic success. In fact, in congruency between academic achievement and test scores, has been the focus of my studies since sitting for my comprehensive exams a few years ago, but that's a topic for a different day. Back to the point, aside from the high test scores, the academic and social experiences that teachers and administrators are able to give our children are what drew us to choose District 150 above all others. Back when we moved, however, our teachers were free to teach and facilitate the development of critical thinking skills. Our administrators could and did back the teachers in matters of policy, procedure, curricula, and education as a whole. Now, it's a far different story, and that is to no fault of the faculty and staff of the schools. I have been approached by countless employees of the district, because I'm a mental health therapist, asking me to help them to cope with the change of administration. These are employees who at one point were excited for the change in leadership, hopeful that it would turn around our district and bring it back to what once was. Never could any of us imagine that the change it took would be one for the worst. Not only do employees fear the superintendent and her misguided and ludicrous procedural decisions, but they now have been made very aware that they can't even count on our school board to make educated, informed, and rational decisions. For this reason, I feel like I have failed my family in the decision to bypass more reputable schools and to stick with District 150. If you would like to have a clear example of how this is made evident to not only the employees, but also to us, the public, please, I encourage you to all watch yourselves on the archived meeting site. Listen to the way that you talk to the citizens who are coming to you out of pure concern. Watch the way that you behave, passing notes, text messaging, rolling your eyes, facial expressions, body language. You guys are all professionals. You know better than that. That said, I have two and a half years to decide whether or not to send my boys to District 150. At the rate things are going, there is absolutely no way that I will even consider it. And to me, a third-generation educator and a third-generation District 150 grad, that is a painful decision to have to make. Here's something I need you to consider. When asked why people don't want to live in Peoria, most people would bypass the alarming amount of violent crime and go straight to the point of, "I will do anything to keep my kids from having to go to the District 150." I want to make this part perfectly clear, though. Those comments are not made in reference to the teachers and administrative staff of each school. They are made in reference to the ill-advised decisions of the superintendent and the board, decisions that go against evidence-based practices, decisions that do not and have not included parental concern in the last three years since Dr. Lathan made her debut. When your leadership is a bigger deterrent than a high rate of violent crimes, that's something to be said.
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, proud president of the Peoria Federation of Teachers. So, you've heard from your employees, you've heard from parents, you've heard from members of the community, you've heard from the mayor, all of whom are saying, "Mr. Conductor, this train is heading down the wrong track." And my question is, when are you going to listen? Is there a culture of fear and intimidation in District 150? Yes. Has that culture trickled down from central administration to building principals, to teachers, to parents, and now unfortunately, to students? Yes. We do have some phenomenal programs in District 150. Those programs are phenomenal, however, not because of the culture created in the district by your number-one employee, but despite it. Employees have to contend with manifold societal issues in an effort to do their best to educate every child in our district. It is unfortunate they also have to work against fear and intimidation from within in order to do so. I think you believe you have a leader who is bringing out the most in employees and is holding accountable those who don't step up. That is so far off the mark that, in my opinion, you either have to be completely misinformed or completely delusional to believe it, and I'm serious. Leadership is about getting all of your stakeholders focused on accomplishing its common goals and collaborating and working hard to accomplish those goals. It's not about what we have here, alienating your stakeholders and desperately deflecting blame in an effort to maintain power and authority. People aren't let go because they don't make the mark. Understand that. They're let go because they're perceived to be disloyal. This is education. What you are allowing to transpire, promoting actually, is absolutely shameful. Switching gears, but not really, you praise yourselves because our district is in the black. Please let me remind you that you're not in the black because of some sort of fancy accounting you've done. You're in the black because of the sacrifices your employees have made. As you've stated time and again, personnel is your number-one expense. That's where you've saved your money. Not administrative freezes or cuts, mind you, but because of ours. That said, we do expect things to get better. You squander money on a $400,000 book inventory system that doesn't work, spend a million bucks in attorney's fees because you can't seem to collaborate, and you pay taxes unnecessarily, and then you say those things are but a drop in the district's overall budget, but not to us and not to the ones making the sacrifices, not to the taxpayers whose money it is. And I need to say to you, when is the last time we've seen a debate at the horseshoe or even an in-depth discussion? It's just 7-0, stamp, 7-0, stamp, 7-0, stamp. We could have just one of you show up and the result would be the same. When is the last time we had a discussion at the horseshoe about literacy or about how Common Core impacts our district? We would like for the Board of Education to engage its stakeholders, to collaborate with them, with us. That's our expectation. And we are primed to take action if you don't live up to it. Thank you.
That last meeting left me so disheartened. I have to say, before I forget, the worst part about that night was hearing you, Rick, say the words "lack of leadership" in regards to Principal Wetterhour. You really owe him an apology for saying that. You couldn't be more far from the truth. And that bothers me more than you telling me to sit. And I do respect and understand parliamentary procedures, and I tried to be as nice as I could, but all that went through my head was, I spent nine years of my life putting it on standby to fight for this country and the U.S. Air Force. And I didn't do that for someone to tell me to sit down when I want to speak. And I think it was very rude, and it was even more rude as someone stated before that you let other people stand. If you're going to do things, do them. And it seems like when it comes to getting rid of people that you don't like, it's no problem there, so maybe you should do that in other ways as well. Speaking of the whole veteran thing, there are amazing similarities between the way you run this school district and how the military operates. That has been in my head for this last two weeks because 20 years ago, right now, I was at basic training, and they led us through fear and intimidation, two words that I keep hearing over and over and over. And I think about people who become teachers and how loving they teachers and how loving they are. They love children, they love to lead, they are kind, they are honest, they are caring, they are patient. I don't see that going on from any of you, and I think that some of you sitting there have been teachers before. It takes a special person to become a teacher, just like it takes a special person to become a soldier. We should not be treating them like that. It is so wrong on so many levels. On that same note, have you spent time in these schools? Do you people walk the halls of the schools? Do you talk to the teachers? Do you ask the teachers if they're happy? Do you ask if their voices are being heard? Do you ask them if they're overwhelmed? Do you ask them how hard it is to try to do your curriculum and try to do the IB curriculum and now let's mix in Common Core? Does that overflow you? Do you feel like you can let the kids have creativity? Or are you bogged down by your schedules? All that stuff affects the children. The teachers carry all that on their shoulders. So last two weeks ago, we were told that we were going to lose Mrs. Low and Mrs. Schiefling, and that we had so many days, and you guys fast-forwarded the process and they were gone by Friday. And I told myself and some other people, there's no way that they would do this to us without a plan in place. There's no way. They have already turned our school into a shell of what it once was. There's no way they would do that. And who needs substitute teachers the next Monday? Charter Oak Primary School. Really? Really? These are our special-needs children. They need continuity, they need love, they need people that understand them, and if you chase out the people that were taking good care of them, they don't have time to even have a transition with a new teacher. And the new teacher that comes, she's a wreck. She's wonderful, she seems like a great teacher, I love her style, but she got ripped out of where she was, so not only are our kids sad, her former kids are sad. She is sad. She went to work one day and was told she had to go to Charter Oak, and a couple hours later she was told, "Oh, sorry, you're staying." And then a couple hours later, "Oh, you're going." Is that professional on any level? But that's how you guys are running the show. And we obviously have no power, but we're sure trying. She's never worked with 4th grade students before. She has to take training for corrective reading, and I do not say this to criticize her because I think she seems like a very nice individual and I like her style. I would like to go to dinner with her. But it makes me look at you guys and scratch my head because after everything you did to us, this was not what should have happened. You guys should have, you've had two months, more than two months, because we knew you were coming after Wetterhour before you showed up about the tests. And I keep hearing, "We want everything for the children, it's all about the children," but if you guys were doing this right, you would know that every part of that affects these children. My child is in one of those classrooms, and she's coming home crying. She misses people, she doesn't understand. It all seems so simple to these kids, and it's so wrong and so cruel, and they shouldn't be dealing with these kind of things under the age of 10. The locks. I have to bring up the locks again. Someone talked to someone, this is totally hearsay, and I get that, but I have to say it because it drives me crazy. Someone just merely mentioned to another person that their furniture was still in their old office and that they're not allowed back in the building, and it was merely mentioned to someone. No one threatened, no one said they were coming for it. It was just merely mentioned that at some point, maybe I could get my things back. And you took his keys. Our janitor doesn't have a key to the office.
Thank you very much.
Let's tap back into Remarkable, because we're not going anywhere. Thank you, Rick.
Dan Dougal. Mr. Dougal, is that the correct pronunciation of your name?
It's Dugal.
Dugal.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Dugal.
Sure, thank you. Uh, Mr., I'm Dan Dugal. I live in 5103 West Greenridge Court in Charter Oak area. I want to talk a little bit, or actually ask a couple of questions tonight about Remarkable Rule Number Two. "We will respect learning," it says. Let me just read it to you. It says, "Each child should come to school prepared and ready to learn." And pay attention, this is the good part. "Our staff will be at work, ready to help students learn each and every day and help them achieve their learning goals." So with less than a week's notice, the protocol for MAP testing, you'll remember that testing, it's the one that you compare to the ISAT tests? That protocol was changed this year, within a week of the testing for the mid-session. In the past, our kids have always taken the test in 45-minute sessions with the possibility of finishing the next day. This time, however, they were required to sit for a full 90 minutes at a time to take each of the two tests, the reading test and the math test. Now, we're talking about second graders and third graders and fourth, these are seven-year-olds being forced to take exams for 90 minutes at a time, and there were no exceptions to this rule. Not only is this new draconian protocol ludicrous, it gets worse, because no other elementary schools had their protocols changed this year for the MAP test. We know this because we called around. Whittier, Northmore, Thomas Jefferson, they all tested in shorter sessions, spanning more than one day if necessary. So I ask you, why were the children of Charter Oak being singled out for these new rules? Let me speculate. Is it because the parents of these children have the audacity to speak out against the superintendent, a person well-known for vindictive and retaliatory actions, aimed at those who dare to challenge her? Or is it because the administration is trying to manufacture evidence of supposed cheating when these kids fail to achieve the test scores as they have in past years? It's not enough to dismantle one of the finest schools in the district by removing the teachers and our principal. But now the superintendent is directly targeting our children and setting them up for failure. Tell me how forcing seven-year-olds to sit still for 90 minutes to take an exam helps them learn each day, each and every day, and achieve their learning goals. You've heard about what's going on in the classrooms of the two teachers that were pulled out. In place of one of the two teachers that you pulled out of the classroom, there has been more than one day where no inclusion, uh, no inclusion teacher was even in the room, and seven different substitutes in the room censured your action. Seven different substitutes. Many of these special education kids have a lot of difficulty dealing with change because they, due to medical conditions such as autism and others. So tell me, how, tell me how having seven different teachers in the past week and a half helps them learn each day and every day and achieve their learning goals? Now, I don't believe that any of you ran for your seats without good intentions. You wanted to do good. And I also think that you're also thinking that this whole thing is just going to blow over in another couple of months. I can tell you that it's not, because every day, new voices come out of the woodwork to join our own. Let me be clear, though, you've got a problem. And I get it, it's not easy to admit that you've made a mistake, especially when that mistake is sitting right next to you. But more and more stories keep coming out of the woodwork. When are you going to wake up and stop drinking the Broad Foundation Kool-Aid? I can tell you with absolute certainty that the parents and teachers of this district want nothing to do with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jody Gama. Is that pronounced correctly?
Gama.
Gama.
Close enough.
Thank you.
I'm going to bring it back to right next door, Von Steuben. I have a son who attends Von Steuben, he's in 5th grade, and on January 30th, myself and my husband received two separate phone calls stating that our son had had an accident at school and ended up having a seizure in the lunchroom, and he was removed from the lunchroom and taken to the office where EMTs came, assessed him. My husband had to tell them to take him to OSF. When we got there, he continued to seize for two more hours. He had an EKG, an EEG, an MRI, two X-ray, and a CT of his head. He has a skull fracture to the back of his head, he has a brain bleed in the front of his head, and we have been refused to speak to any of the teachers or staff that saw what happened to our son, and I want to know why. We cannot give his neurologist any information as to what happened because we have been told we cannot speak to the teachers by Mrs. Cox, who is a substitute fill-in principal. We went on Friday after the incident occurred. Mrs. Foreman was there, who had not been there the day the incident took place. She allowed us to speak to two teachers who gave two different stories again. So my son was admitted to the Pediatric Intermediate Unit at St. Francis. He was completely out of it for two days. He has still not come back to school because we came back on Monday, the union rep from the board, I guess, told them they were not allowed to speak to us, no one. Officer Collins, Officer Colble were called to the school. We told them specifically, "We don't want third-hand information, this is a very serious incident that happened with our son." We were treated like criminals, pretty much that is what happened. We still, to this day, have not spoke to any teachers since Friday as to what happened. On Monday, Mr. Delinsky, who I did come over to the school board and talk to Jerry Hammer, who said we should be allowed to speak to the teachers but not the students who saw what happened, then when I get back over to the school, she, Mrs. Hammer, tells Mrs. Cox, "That is not what she told me." I mean, it has been a complete runaround. And I know it's because they think that we have a lawyer, but they're sadly mistaking. This is just for our child's health benefits. We had to take our child back to the neurologist today because he is covered in hives from the two seizure medications he is taking that we don't even know if he needs to take, because we don't know if he had a seizure before he hit the ground or if the seizure happened after he hit the ground. And why do we not know this? Because we have not been allowed to speak to anybody since Friday. Nobody. No one from the school has called us to see how our son's doing, who was in the hospital, who the school knows has a skull fracture, they know he has a brain bleed. No one, not one person, has called us to check on the welfare of our child, except for Peggy Stahl, who is a helper in the classroom of Mr. Bassoni. She is the only person who has checked on our child. That is it. I want to know why we don't have an incident report. We were given a small paragraph as to what they think happened to our son. I want to know why he was moved. I want to know if there is a procedure that is followed when a child hits the floor and begins to convulse, because from what we are told, he was talking in the lunchroom after the seizure, but once he was taken to the office, he was no longer talking anymore. That's when the seizure activity began again. We want answers tonight, or I am going to a lawyer in the morning and I am getting answers one way or another. Because if my son does not need to be on this medication and because we are not getting information is on this medication, somebody's going to pay for this. Plain and simple. This is ridiculous. We are told no child left behind. It took us five days to be able to get my son's homework because nobody would let us talk to any teachers until finally Mr. Delinsky stepped in and allowed us to talk to, to his teachers that he is taught by, not the teachers that saw what happened to him, just the teachers he is taught by. That's the only way we were able to get his homework. All of his grades have gone from straight A's to B's, all because he has not been allowed to be back in school.
I believe Mr. Delinsky is going to meet with you right this moment.
I'd be happy to talk to you.
I believe Mr. Gama is also going to speak if you'd like to.
My name's Matthew Gama. I graduated from Central in '93. My wife graduated from Woodruff also. My whole family's from the area. The only thing we received about this incident was from Jaclyn Hendrickson, which is the 6th grade special education teacher at Von Steuben, who I believe was the acting principal on this day. This happened, the incident happened Thursday, 11:30. This was written an hour and a half after my wife came to Von Steuben to try to find out what happened. It states, "On 1/30/14, Zack Gama, first lunch period. I was dismissing students from the lunchroom when I turned to my left and saw Zack laying on the floor shaking. Teachers were around him, keeping him in place, then Zack got up and was crying, but saying he was fine. He said he was not. They sat him down and told Dahl and Shepherd to call 911 and parents. Zack said his head hurt, and I said, 'That is because you probably hit your head when you fell over.' He was then escorted to the office because he was already speaking and had moved. EMT was there quickly and talking to him. I told EMT, 'I believe he hit his head because he said his head hurt.' EMT asked where it hurt, and he said the back and showed us where. Then I let the EMT take over." I'm not sure if you guys have children, but when you, your child is in the hospital from an incident that could have probably been stopped, it really hurts, okay? It took seven of us to hold him down, just to get an IV started, okay? And still, we have no answers to what's happened to him. None at all. Could anybody share some information with us? The only person that, that has said anything is Mr. Tim Delinsky, which was five days after this occurred. Okay, five days. We need that information within the hour, and we didn't have it. Today, we went to neurologist because of his highs from the medication, and one of the questions he asked was, "Did you get any more information?" No, we did not. He said, "Well, did anybody see if one side of his body was seizing more than the other?" We didn't have the answers, but we could have if we were allowed to talk to his teachers. In the past couple of days, my wife and I have leased a new home out of the district in East Peoria. We have always decided that we would stay in Peoria because of diversity, and we're from here. That's changed. When your beliefs and your safety for your jobs comes before our children, then that's not right. That's all I have to say.
First, I understand that this is an incredibly difficult and painful situation for your family, and I hope that Mr. Delinsky can help you provide, help provide you with some information here as quickly as possible. As to some of the other issues, I don't have details on it, but I would hope the administration would respond to that extremely rapidly, and that if there's any process that we need to change so that this is not handled in this way again, that needs to be done forthwith. Is that clear? I don't know, I don't know why it took place, and I don't know what the activity of the union reps were, but I'm just telling you, I don't know what the rules are, but the first thing that comes first is taking care of that child in that room, in that situation.
Don't put us out there without all the information.
No. Well, I'm just saying, if there's...
I'm just saying, you better just be quiet about it now. Don't put us in it like that.
He's the one that's in.
We'll do everything on our end, if we can.
Let's, let's just make sure that we take care of this child first.
Talk to the superintendent.
The teachers all changed their story. But if I could speak, the teachers all changed their story to have one collaborative story once we came to them again on Tuesday. First, there were three different stories, and then once the union stepped in...
I'll talk to you.
Once the union stepped in, there were...
Thank you, thank you very much, and hopefully Mr. Delinsky can speak with you immediately. At this point, that concludes the speakers. Dr. Lathan, could you care to respond?
Just a couple things. There is no direct target against children. I know we disagree, and you have your opinions, and you have the right to your opinions, but you need to understand, just because we disagree and you have your strong opinions about how you feel, there's no strong attack. And some of you have painted... And some of you have painted things and put things out there to paint a picture that you want to see, but it's a difference of opinions. But there are things that, and we don't go looking for reasons to get people, or, and if you heard something-
Please.
I sat and listened to you. And then if you heard different things, then you should also think about the information that you receive. Once again, we're doing our best to educate children. We don't always see eye to eye, and you don't, you're not going to always agree with us, but we're not targeting children. Some of you have chosen to make targets and chosen to do things, but we're going to continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Where are you going to start?
Thank you very much.
Where's your plan?
We're moving on to item number three on finances. Dr. Kenny? Any questions on purchase orders? Item number four, Dr. Lathan.
Since our last board meeting report on January 13th, 2014, we received 10 new Freedom of Information Act requests. Of these two, uh, new requests, two were filled. There were six pending requests noted on the January 13th, 2014 board report. Those requests were filled. We have received 18 requests for this calendar year.
Thank you. We've come to the consent agenda. I believe Reverend Butler has agreed to read the consent agenda this evening. If you can get to the microphone or pull closer to you.
Yes. The action items for the consent agenda are, number one, gifts to the school district this meeting, $100. Year-to-date, $78,968.49. The proposed action is that the Board of Education accept the following donations and letters of appreciation to be sent to the donors. Again, that $100 was sent by Lisa Stegmeier to Woodruff Wilson School to support the art club. Donations totaling $4,500 were made to the Peoria Public School Foundation, with $2,400 coming from Ben and Kate Julian to be used for Washington Gifted, and $2,000 by Joseph Bennen to be used by treatment date treatment. Item number two, payment of bills. Item number three is the human resources report. The proposed action, appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. Item number four, payment for travel. Item number five, field trip approval. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the Woodruff Career Technical Center cosmetology to students, May 4th through the 5th, 2014, to travel to the Proud Lady Beauty Show to be held at Tenny Park Convention Center in Tenny Park, Illinois, per Board Policy 6:240. No students will be denied attendance due to inability to pay. Item number six, field trip approval. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the Woodruff Career Technical Center cosmetology, barbering, and hair braiding students, March 23rd through March 24th, 2014, to travel to the America's Beauty Show 2014, to be held at the McCormick Place in Chicago, Illinois, per Board Policy 6:240. No students will be denied attendance due to inability to pay. Item number seven, field trip approval. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the Peoria High School sophomore boys' basketball team to travel to University of Iowa, Iowa City, Iowa, February 11th, 2014, to tour the college campus, including the dorms, bookstore, and athletic facilities, meet with admissions, meet with the U of I players and coaches, and attend the men's basketball practice, per Board Policy 6:240. No student will be denied attendance due to inability to pay.
Reverend Butler, I believe item number eight will be pulled. Do we need to still read it?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Item number eight has been pulled as noted.
That, that related to a field trip approval, and I believe it's just being deferred. Is that correct? Thank you. Number nine.
Item number nine, amended 2014, 2015, and 2015 to 2016 school calendars. Proposed action, that the Board of Education adopts the attached 2014 to 2015, and 2015 through 2016 school calendars as amended. Item number 10, speech therapist consulting agreement. Proposed action, that the administration be authorized to enter into a purchase agreement with Kathy Schultz, a certified speech and language pathologist, to secure diagnostic and speech pathology services for early childhood students up to two days per week, beginning February 11th, 2014, through May 30th, 2014. The hourly rate is $65 per hour, up to 6.6 hours per day. The anticipated expenditure requested for authorization will not exceed $12,000 unless additional IEP requirements necessitate service increase and meets with the approval by Peoria Public Schools. This service will be funded through the education fund. Item number 11, comptroller treasurer contract. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve a contract for Mark Wilcoxon to serve as comptroller treasurer, July 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2017, at the annual salary of $135,000. The GOVQA FOIA management system, the proposed action, that the Board of Education approve a three-year agreement with GOVQA to provide the district with licensed software that will manage FOIA requests, tracking, and processing. The first year total cost of $5,000 include $2,000 for the cost of the software implementation, plus $3,000 for the annual subscription fee, and thereafter, an annual subscription fee of $3,000 for the remaining two years. GOVQA will be paid out of the education fund. Mr. President, that concludes the items for the consent account.
Thank you, Reverend Butler. Are there any items that individual members would like to have pulled prior to a vote, or for a separate vote?
Not for, but just for the actual items as well.
Right, we'll have some discussion on that. So there are nothing to be pulled? Okay. At that point then, could we have a, we are pulling item number eight, and that is the field trip, which will be deferred to a later date, as I believe that.
Yes. So item number nine, which is the amended calendars, want to just address that-
Do I need, I think I need a motion first, though. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion, and now, Dr. Lathan.
So the, for the amended calendars for 2014-15 and 2015-2016, just because of the incident, uh, situation we've had this school year with snow days, we're just amending the calendars to reflect that Pulaski Day will be the first day that we use in, in event of snow, uh, moving forward for the next two years. And so we're bringing that back for you, just to reapprove that.
Okay.
Item number 10, speech therapist consulting agreements, just to provide additional supports for students. We have, we just need additional staff to support them. Item number 12 is the FOIA management system. It is a computerized system that will provide us additional support for tracking FOIAs, being able to generate reports, and keep all the information in a centralized location, so that when we have additional inquiries, we'll be able to cross-reference that information and pull it up. Sometimes you get the same FOIA request in, so you're going back through basically paper. And so by having everything in basically a database, we'll be able to pull that information and manage it. It's a total for the first year of $5,000, and then $3,000 for the next two years. So a total cost for three years of $11,000.
May I ask a question about that?
Mr. Crawford.
Does that management system have a mechanism for, I mean, here we're going to be able to pull up items that we've pulled before for FOIA disclosures, yet sometimes we have disclosures where we go to our attorneys and say, "Do, can we disclose this?" Will that help alleviate that cost in terms of, we've disclosed this before, therefore it's going to be disclosed again?
Information that needs to be redacted will still continue to need to be redacted. Uh, but there will still be information that will need to be screened to make sure we're not violating any, violating confidentiality. But all that information will be also accessible by the public, uh, and that information will be up on the district website.
And does this help, um, so this is designed to streamline, uh, I, responses that we've given before, so that we're not in the process of do, so we don't duplicate efforts that we had already engaged in previously.
Right. Right, because if that information is there, then you'll be able to pull it up and then provide it to another requester.
Ms. Wolfbauer.
So in other words, what you're saying is, when someone sends in a FOIA request, that we can put that request and the response on the website, so that it will be available to all the public?
Yes, that is correct.
I, I saw a demonstration of the, the software. There are a number of municipalities that use this, and it allows individual requestors to create an account and their, keep track of their own requests. In terms of the workflow, in terms of how it's handled, it makes it much easier for the staff to manage that and move that information back and forth in a, frankly, a much more secure fashion, so that you have a tracking of where it is and the process of being responded to. I also think that it gives you an ability to track the, the direct and indirect costs of responding to those requests in a way that our system really doesn't allow at this point. There's a great deal of additional transparency that can come out of this, simply because the way it automates the process, and it allows you to disclose information in a way that gives much more availability to it. So I think it's a step forward in that regard. I would, I would also ask, Dr. Lathan, if you could just comment on the selection of Mark Wilcoxon. I, I've met him, I believe, at least three times. This is a gentleman who has an extremely significant background in school administration and finance, and I think there's, I believe there's a news release that has details on his background, and I think there was something in the newspaper the other day. But could you speak to that just briefly, and his, his background?
Yes, he has experience at, at the Illinois State Board level, and then also at, from, from Northeastern Illinois University. So he has a great deal of experience as it relates to school finance, wanting to relocate to the area, has roots in central Illinois, and so we're really excited about him joining, joining us, and the expertise that he'll bring. It's going to be sad to see Dr. Kenny leave, but we know it's been his desire for the past three years to truly retire. But we thank him so much for his service.
Thank you. I, I know that he has family in the area already. And I think he's already, has he purchased a home yet, or is, he's already purchased a home in the district? So, with that in, in mind, any other questions from the board on any of those issues?
I, I'll just kind of piggyback on Dr. Lathan's comment. The time for goodbyes for Dr. Kenny will be much later down the road, considering he's going to be here many-
Yeah, that's a way.
And I, because, because the accolades will be well-deserved, the time that he leaves us, so.
Okay. With that, are there any other questions? Then if you would please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Costa?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Ms. Patel?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. On the deliberation agenda, we have one item. And Ms. Costa, would you read that, please?
On the expulsion, the proposed action is that the expulsion is listed on the report dated February 10th, 2014, be approved as amended.
Second.
Would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Costa?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye. Students expelled by the board are referred to by number there by ensuring privacy. Board action concerning the students has been decided in executive session. That concludes the deliberation agenda. Any presentation or suggestions by board members at this time? Reverend Butler?
Yes. I would like to suggest or recommend that the information that's provided for individuals that attend the school board meetings, that we also now add to that information what individuals can expect in regards to the board, what they can or cannot comment on, or how things are done. I think for some times when people come for the first time and they have questions, and those questions are not acknowledged or answered, then it kind of heightens maybe a little bit more of the frustration. But there is a reason, and there is a process of how we do things to make sure things are addressed. So I think, I don't know how that can be placed out with other information, but just again, to know what to expect in terms of, as we would say, the etiquette or the protocol when you attend a meeting. I know recently, when another local district was going to be addressing some community issues, it was noted in the article, in the local newspaper, what to expect and not to expect, you know, at that meeting. But we have some standard things which we do, that perhaps can be beneficial to all who come, and will know what to expect from the board at this particular time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any reports from board committees?
As it is noted, that the Parent Teacher Advisory Committee will be meeting this Thursday, February 13th, at 5:00 p.m. So, just want to make note of that. We did not have a January meeting, but we will be meeting in February.
I think there's some also, some items that, from a policy committee standpoint, we need to deal with, and can we get one of those scheduled for the next couple of weeks? I will. Okay. And I believe there is a parent university coming up-
Next Wednesday.
-next Wednesday.
Tuesday.
This, it's-
Tuesday.
This, Tuesday night. Okay, good. With that, any other comments, questions, presentations? Motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Thank you.